And two hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-three cents.
How about an event? I don't know what kind you're like.
Yeah, I don't know. Would it have to be by the end of the month? I don't know if the event, because we don't pay them. I think it would have to take place by the end of the month, because we pay them that day.
We have file pace for those.
Yeah.
What about treating the teak benches outside? If we could hire someone?
Uh, yeah, we could get it done quickly.
That's a good idea.
What would we, what would we do? Have someone?
Comment if they need stripping or sanding or whatever and finishing.
But we'd have to hire somebody quickly and they'd have to work fast to get it done in time.
We'd have to get an estimate and maybe prepay.
Yeah.
Could we prepay?
Um, look into it.
Actually, who would we have to do something with?
The company that delivered them does that when they do it. But they might know, or Joseph might know.
Or a carpenter, just a carpenter.
We had a couple carpenters, contractors look at it. They didn't want to do it.
It's a small job.
That, and you gotta sand them, you gotta stain them, and you gotta lift and move with them.
I remember them.
And yes.
I think we all took a turn out there working with that stuff, yeah.
How about the walkway? Can you get any of the, um, product?
Um, what about, um, the?
We're kidding back. The booths?
Yeah, isn't that supposed to be done?
Oh, the desk.
Uh, somebody is supposed to be volunteering to do it and giving us, if they had stuff left over. It was supposed to happen in the spring. He had talked to George about it, but there was a company in town that was gonna do it.
Then you know what? Why don't we just see if we can get it done? We'll pay for it.
Okay.
What do you think about that?
Yes, as long as I can get it.
I mean, that is something that needs to be done.
George had gotten estimates already, so I don't know if those would still be.
Yeah, it was already scheduled to do.
Yeah, and then one of the people said that they would have stuff left over and they would just come and do it for free for the library, but then it was after they had, you know, finished projects.
And that's really big, the comfort of that floor.
Yeah, and it's got big holes in it right now, so, okay.
So we could find out, well, maybe that guy can still do it.
Yeah, I can ask George. I'm sure he left us somewhere.
Do we need to have an additional meeting to vote on approving?
We already approved having it done.
Okay.
And Bonnie's in charge of the budget, so I don't think so. She just has to spend that money.
But we can't spend it due to seventeen?
Oh, I think we can. Yeah, I think we could start.
I don't think they're gonna, Nicole would've said, oh, they might not, and she didn't say that.
I think it would be fine.
That money's already gone from there.
It's probably something that's done all the time.
Yeah.
So what else do you need?
So supplies, paper goods, that and supplies.
Yeah, we're gonna get, we're gonna get a lot of custodial supplies and stock up on that. Um, the book covering supplies, we always need, things like that, um, office supplies.
How about the totes we keep talking about? Why don't we buy some totes? Tow pack?
Oh, yeah. Oh, that brings me to another.
Instead of selling them, just buy them.
Yeah, um, and I was getting some summer reading prices, because I didn't have a lot this year and I hadn't really got to check into it yet, so they had some stuff from DMCO.
Um, even with the furniture and all the stuff on the list, we're probably only halfway there. How about a computer upgrade?
Pretty expensive. But that couldn't happen. That takes a really long time for sales.
What about new chairs for the office?
We could do that.
You really?
I really don't like those chairs.
They're uncomfortable. They're not comfortable.
Why does it take a long time to get a computer?
Well, it has to go through sales and, um, our IT, the IT person has to price them out and everything, so it's just because we're on the.
That's fine, buy a computer.
No, we have, um, the tech through, yeah, through sales, so that would take a little while, with it only being a few weeks. I think if I can buy things online, so it's already, you know, I get the invoice whether they're here by the end of the month or not.
Yeah.
That would probably work. But anything where I have to get estimates and stuff might take.
I'm wondering if you could buy the, just buy the computer with enough hardware in it to just have software installed by the sales.
I can check with George, um, other George, who's the IT person.
Is it still George?
We get ordered that.
It's George with a J. He spells it with a J, so that's how we always refer to him when George is saying our George with a J.
And then we wouldn't be using the latch account?
Yeah.
Which tends to go down quickly.
And a couple of them are due for upgrades.
Where, where is this money from? Oh, with personnel, because of George's departure, George's departure.
Yeah, my salary, the rest of my salary was left over. There was, um, we also had, the budget had longevity and career incentive for Linda, because she hadn't retired yet when he did this budget, so we did end up using that.
Are there any, like, technological things for library work that we could get or that you need?
I will look.
Or any special equipment or?
A sound system, a little portable sound system for outdoors?
We do have a nice speaker setup. We don't have a microphone, but we have a really nice.
But for outdoors?
Yeah.
Even, well, Georgia talked about one time, even like there's something in here to, in cases of emergency, to reach everybody, like a, like a bow horn, but something to be able to speak and everybody could hear.
Yeah.
At the desk.
At the desk.
We had talked about that a long time ago.
Yes. When you start talking these things.
No, I'm saying, a long time ago, um, but that, that would be something for the staff.
Yeah. It could be just something permanently mounted, you just speak into it.
Yeah.
Because it would be a lot of, up to ear.
Any other furniture that you, you could use?
We're out of space, basically. Um, I do wanna get some beanbag chairs. These I've had my eye on for a while for the kids section, so I was gonna get four of those.
Okay.
They look like little easy chairs, but they're beanbag chairs.
One of the ones, um, they're like the beanbag chair, but they're a foam.
What do you know, I can look into that.
I'll, um, I'll look it up. I bought the boys each one of them. They absolutely love them. And they still sit up straight in them. They're company, they're up in Kittery. They have a store in Kittery, but, uh, I'll get the information on the chairs. They, they are, and they're so lightweight and easy to move around. That they would be flexible.
And there was no discussion or no opportunity to roll it over? Any of this money? Absolutely not. No exaggerating circumstances.
We never have money.
I don't think it's been a problem before.
We had a discussion about the air conditioning system needing some kind of upgrading or replacing.
And that would take way too long, plus the towns are looking at it with.
Yeah, we're, and we're on the list.
Energy conservation program.
Okay.
We're on the list for an HVAC.
We're on the list, uh, where the money is, but we're on the list.
Um, and plantings for the exterior would take labor, so that wouldn't work?
That's in our grant?
Well, I'm just wanting to spend the money.
Well, we need mulch and weeding.
Yeah.
Could we do that, the, do the gardens?
Yeah.
Because we had a couple quotes last year when we did it. One, I, one of them was Mike Lee's, but not to tell him, but there's two other ones.
You said mulch and what else?
Cleaning up the gardens.
Cleaning, oh, labor.
Yeah.
Yeah, the dandelions are huge.
We've got some nice plants, but we've got some.
But just a word of advice, at that island there going down between the school and us, at the far end of that island is some, uh, poison hemlock.
Lovely.
Yeah, I contacted the school, but I haven't heard back. That stuff's real dangerous.
And the kids come across there all the time.
Yeah, I don't know if they go that far down. It's at the very end. And it's on top of the, uh, our fence.
Boy, I didn't even know it existed around here.
I didn't either.
I wonder what it looks like.
Are you talking behind the benches?
Up on that wall, behind the benches where the fence is.
Oh.
You can see it, it's like real tall. It looks almost like a Queen Ansel's.
Ah.
Where you have to kill the roots, so the way to come back. And it's nasty stuff. If you could rub against it, you could get it.
So could I put an exterminator of a plant?
We may have to do that, because what I'm thinking is, we fought for that divide, who says theirs or ours, and we finally just took control of it and did it. So the school's probably gonna say it's yours.
Um, if we're gonna have someone come do the garden, could we have them do that at the same time?
I don't know if they do that. You need to have somebody that's, uh, probably has a license to have a certain chemical to get rid of those.
You don't dig it up by the root?
You're not supposed to touch it.
Oh.
It's that bad. Poison hemlock. Everybody, you don't touch it.
I didn't know what it was. My wife took a picture of it and identified it on the, uh, whatever program she uses.
So we should just let you know if we have ideas for your.
We should all call out actually the meeting and take a look at it.
Yeah, it's nasty. There's something going down along the school stone wall that's due to damage.
Yeah, right?
It's kinda time crunch, yeah.
So you're not supposed to, like, it's, like, environmentally, you're not supposed to touch it, or just it would be bad for you?
Like DMCO things like that, where I can order them online, I wanna do it probably.
Animals too.
Yeah, so it's kinda grown wild.
What about the kitchen area? Anything in there?
Not really. We don't use that that much.
You guys got a coffee pot, right?
Yeah, we have a karaoke.
Well, there you go, get some pods. Yeah, stock up on the pods. It was used in ancient Greek to execute political prisoners. And Socrates took poison hemlock. That's why it's familiar. Boy, you can find anything on.
Yeah, it's great.
I'm always looking stuff up. It's fatal for cows and sheep.
Assistant directors' report?
Um, I think I put it in with the director's report. So I'm just getting ready for summer reading, basically. Tax.
Motion, or is it just all one?
It was basically one.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Included. Friends update. Bonnie emailed it to everyone. I got it from Sue Branco. I asked her to send a little refresher just before this meeting. So they're going to try to hold a raffle, which will be a lot of fun.
You have to go grab something.
I said you could go wild with that, but I think just the one item is enough to start with.
There's one item, or there's?
Two raffle.
Buildings.
Yeah.
Buildings.
Yeah, not one item, but one.
Harry Potter.
Yeah, Harry Potter structure, structures.
Now, that came in online?
Yeah.
It was in email? Yeah, my, my printer, I guess I couldn't print it out.
Yeah, Bonnie added it, of course I sent it to her later.
Okay.
So what do they wanna do? Oh, at, that's, I'm sorry, says it right there, in conjunction. So at the books sale, I can buy a raffle ticket. That's fine.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Fowl had dropped these, or Denise McCauley had made these, and she wanted to put them out to sell with the books, but I wanted to double check. I know we can sell books and that's fine, but is it okay to put other things out as well?
These are pretty pictures.
They're photographs she took and had printed and put them in for note cards, so.
Um, Fowl was a five oh one C three, so I believe they can do that.
I thought, yeah.
They can do that?
I, there were five oh one C three.
Yeah, the proceeds go right to the.
So they're a nonprofit organization.
But it's being sold to here, at the desk?
It, it would be with the books on the little, where Michael puts his specially priced books, I wanted to put the box out there.
Only thing is, you'd have to charge tax on those.
Who, who took the pictures?
Denise McCauley.
She was friends?
She used to be, yeah. How does that work with tax?
Do I need to check with Fowl?
How does it work with?
Honestly, it wouldn't be the most responsible.
That must be an event.
But we collect the money, because if it's with the book sales stuff, the stock collects the money.
Just like you do when you sell books.
Charge taxes when you sell books?
No, there's no tax on the books, so why would we have to?
So maybe you should check with the treasurer, Fowl, or, or Sue, or any other.
Sue wasn't sure either, so she wanted me to ask the board.
I don't think it would be an issue, because you're just selling something that friends donated, and the money's going to friends anyhow.
I'd have to see how the libraries handle it, because in the past, we wanted to sell pens or that, and.
Tow bags and things.
Yeah.
Was that coming back to the library or to Fowl?
The library. Well, but they didn't have their five oh one C three then.
So, but this would be going, the money would go.
Just like a book. It's a donation from a friend with the money going to Fowl, the same category.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Okay.
Motion to approve the sale of the postcards?
Motion to approve the sale of the postcards by, by Fowl.
By Fowl, with proceeds to go to Fowl. And we were seconded, seconded. All in favor?
I.
I would, I think it would open a can of worms.
Done.
I guess it's okay.
It's suicide.
To raise money.
Yeah.
You think we'll open a can of worms?
Well, only because then, oh, I do this and I'll sell it too. And if it goes to Fowl, I guess it's okay, but then all of a sudden you become the purveyor of trinkets.
And we don't believe it's, because it's one more thing for the staff to.
The board has to approve it.
Each one?
Yeah.
And it's Fowl. It's.
It's not us, is it?
There are a library affiliated.
Okay, trustee subcommittee updates, director search. This is a two-part update. The first part is, I spoke with Jennifer Harris, who is the independent contractor recommended by Bibliotems, and she sent me a, her resume, she sent me a letter of proposal that she had done for Wayland. Uh, she was originally a director at Plymouth and was the legislative liaison with the mass library system, and she's very gung ho about lobbying and advocacy and things like that. And she had a lot of good suggestions for us for free, such as updating our website. She said we need a much more robust online presence. Um, she said your budget needs to be made more robust, which we all know. It would be nice one day for the town to pay for all our materials and so on. And, uh, she said, let her know what we think of hiring a consultant and having her help. She said she really is more oriented towards helping with the search. She said she could be a presence one to two days a week, which she's done at other libraries. But in the meantime, we've got the world's absolutely best proposal from Bonnie.
Maybe. We'll see what you think.
And, um, do you, do you want to?
I can try to explain it. Okay, so.
And I am like jumping up and down excited.
I wrote it by, as the chair, I wrote it by Laura already, but I would take, I wrote it by Laura as the chair. Um, so I would take the director position if I could move some of the administrative stuff to the assistant director and take over the kids' stuff again. So basically, it's like the assistant director slash children's librarian. If I could get, move some of the, you know, paying bills, administrative things, over to the assistant director position and take back the kids' stuff, then I would be the director. If that works for everyone.
Who's the assistant?
Um, nobody right now. Um, I did ask Dan. He has expressed interest and.
Did he retire from Call River?
Uh, yes, I think technically, yeah.
Because sometimes when you retire your pension, you can only work so much.
Yeah, yeah, he's molding it over still.
Forty hours.
Yeah, he's already working forty hours, so.
So to clarify, this wouldn't be interim director, this would be?
This would be director, and we could stop the search.
So.
Have you talked to Dan?
As the assistant director, is that in the job description to do some of this stuff, or we have to change the job description?
We could, we could write the job description to suit the personnel libraries, do that all the time.
To suit our library needs.
Would you be able to continue, take courses and continuing your progress first prudentially?
Yes.
She would be required.
How long that we use it?
She would be required to finish a degree of, make sure it's there in a.
And I think it's within two years?
Three years.
Three years.
Three years.
So you have two years left approximately?
About two years, yeah.
So you've done some serious thinking?
I did, yeah.
You did.
You put you in a spot and you're not so bad.
It's, yeah. Most of it I feel good about.
She said, what can make the summer better?
But the, the math part is a little more challenging for me, so if we could move that over, you know.
Now, what do you mean, do the whole budget thing and all that, or?
Um, we, we'd have to go through it, but like paying the bills, keeping track of the monthly reports and things like that.
I think with a spreadsheet established, it's pretty easy.
Right.
But if you had Dan, you could do that, you'd be able to.
I'm dyslexic with mine, so just inputting things, I end up making mistakes with, so I switch numbers around.
What did Dan do it for?
Uh, he was the, he worked in reference, I think, for most of the time.
References and research?
Yeah.
I know he worked with Adam Nikos on one of his books, the book about Tom, wasn't it?
What are, what are his credentials for monetary?
I didn't really look into it. I just asked, you know, because.
But he, he had an interest.
Yes, he's a stock person already.
And he knows that some of the administrative stuff.
I'm gonna, yeah, show him, um, kind of what George had left me and then see if that's something he feels he could do, because he's kind of on the fence, I think, right now, but.
But as Bonnie said, it would, not only would it be wonderful having Bonnie as director, because she's, knows the place, she loves the place, everyone works well together and with Bonnie. But it would just be easier, just being realistic, as Bonnie said, to fill a spot, a circulation desk spot rather than a director's spot.
Agreed.
Bonnie moving up, Dan moving up, but leave a spot at the desk.
So Bonnie would resign her position, accept a director's position, and then we would advertise in-house for the assistant director.
Yes.
Which is the first step in town anyway. There wouldn't be anyone else who would be qualified to do that in town.
When I took over as assistant, when Linda retired, they just let you promote me, and I don't think they even did that, so. I don't think it was, I don't think it was ever advertised anywhere.
Really?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that, I don't know if George talked to the select board or something.
But the, the procedure is usually to advertise in-house.
Yeah, and when they're using positions, it has to go with the union, but because it needed, um, what the time, because it was children who acquired the master's degree, so I think because they knew no one else has a library associate degree in town, they were able to skip that part.
And Dan does?
He doesn't. That would have to be something else that would have to.
He doesn't what?
Have the master's degree.
And you need that for assistant director?
You don't need it through the library of Massachusetts, not very bored. As long, as far as I know, I can double check again, but it's just, as long as you have a director with the MLS.
Assistant doesn't need to have an MLS.
Okay.
And the experience would come for a great deal.
It counts for everything, experience and personality.
So really, it's the, the, not the whole administrative part, the financial part?
Yes. Would be moved out, so then that would give me time to do the children's stuff, which is what I didn't wanna leave.
And that's what it is. You, you did it as the assistant, or the assistant does the children's?
Right now, it's the assistant director slash children's, which was the job I took over when Linda retired.
So you, you would like director slash children, with some duties removed and given to the assistant.
Yes, so then I have time.
That won't exist, because it's you, so we'll turn that into Dan.
Yes, we would kind of change the assistant director slash.
Create a different job description.
We have you too, I'm.
Right.
So we'd have to work on writing a new job description for the director and the assistant director.
Right, and I started on that.
And it would have to be approved by the personnel board.
Yes, yes.
So we would have to find out when they're going to have a meeting.
I looked online, I think it's the first Monday of the month.
If.
But if we have urgent business.
They have a meeting, I believe, every other month. They don't always have a meeting.
But if it's urgent?
If it's urgent, I could check with Stella, the administrative assistant to the board.
Would it be the, um, the town clerk that has that information? But they, they don't meet regularly.
Right, right.
I think you'd have to find out.
Right, but I could find out.
Because we.
I know.
Well, I think the first step's gonna be after writing, writing job descriptions for the new positions, that I think we have to approve it.
We'd have to have, the selectmen would have, probably have to approve it.
Yeah, but I think we have to prove it first, we have to have a meeting to approve it, and then for the selectmen.
Right.
So when's the next? But there's no urgency to, I mean, uh, to get it done is the urgency, but we don't have to, um, but we're not in a real time. It's not like spending money.
Right.
We have that same deadline, right?
Yeah, that's true.
But just keep doing it as we're going.
But if Dan takes it, he's gonna get paid more money, so we do have to get it in place.
Oh, of course, yeah, yeah. But the money's in the budget.
It has to be approved before June thirtieth, aren't you saying?
No, 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 no.
No, I'm just saying, we, if Dan is gonna take over that position and some of those things, then we've gotta get this part done so that he can get his right pay.
Well, that money's already there.
Yeah, but he's not getting.
Yeah, but he's not getting it in his pocket.
No, no, no. Right. What we need to do.
Well, first of all, I think you better check with him and make sure he wants to do the administrative part.
Yes. But I still think that would be easier to fill, even if we did have to have, hire an assistant director, administrative, whatever you wanna call it, person. I still think that would be a lot easier to fill than the luck we have with the director's.
Does anybody else have any interest, even a part-timer, should we be a full-timer? Not, not, not instead of Dan, but I could have a Dan spot?
No.
So does this, does this depend upon Dan saying he, he likes this idea?
No, not really.
Okay.
I mean, he's already here, so I thought it would work, but.
And if that doesn't work, we have to empathize.
Yeah, as long as somebody takes over that position.
But that doesn't slow down your becoming the director?
Uh, no.
Would you, would you not want to commit until that of the piece was figured out?
No, as long as, you know, it's in writing that it's gonna happen, basically, like, you're not gonna change your mind, be like, no, you have to do it anyway. She said, no, I checked with her. She's not interested.
Well, we're meeting after, right? Three of us to work on an employment agreement.
You want that same committee to work on job description?
Yeah.
I mean, the same three people, so you don't have to call a special?
Yeah, but.
We could do that.
I sent proposed job descriptions to Bonnie, and I asked Bonnie to look them over.
For the new jobs?
For the new jobs, yeah.
Okay.
I would say the first one you signed me, but I didn't, I had looked at the contractor one yet, but I did look at the administrative assistant.
Okay.
All right.
We need to make some kind of motion?
We do.
We do.
To hire Bonnie as director?
Well, we can't do that right now. We'd have to have the new job description.
It's important.
We can't just do that.
That's what I'm saying, you're changing the job description.
We have, we have to do the footwork first.
We'll do the footwork.
What about, what about pending such and such and such happens?
Thank you. I think we have to find out exactly.
Who's does what?
How to go about it.
Yeah.
All right, so who, who's going to do what to find out who does what?
Well, we have a committee of three.
All right, so you're, the three of you will figure that out. So the committee of three is you two and who else?
So, so.
Now, you've already put a couple things together for Bonnie to look at?
Yeah.
Okay, to start.
Basically, I took the employment agreement that George had, and I altered it somewhat. I didn't put anything in it about getting the masters within three years, which maybe we should do.
Yeah, I think that's an requirement.
So just assuming, yeah.
Our state and everything.
I thought that was a state requirement.
It is.
Yeah.
But it probably should be in the, explicit in the employment agreement. And then for the assistant director, I didn't look at any one that we had here, but I looked at administrative assistant, job description in a library, and I gave Bonnie that just as a jumping off point. It may not have things that he already does about circulation or reference or whatever that can be added in.
Or will that be another position?
Well, there'll be another circulation assistant.
Because he's almost taking the assistant job with a piece of the director's job, so maybe give up all of his duties that he has now.
Oh, he would have, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, he would still have to be at the desk. Everyone has to be at the desk.
Yeah, but not in that. They're still filling in, but he would not be there.
But then we would, then we would hire someone to take Dan's place.
Yeah.
Because no matter what their titles are, we don't have enough people.
And we definitely don't wanna give anything up.
Exactly. Okay, without.
So no motion?
Okay. Well, I'd, uh, we're gonna look into it.
Motion to look into it.
Do you want a motion?
I'll make a motion to look into it.
All right.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
What's the wording? Look into changing.
Changing, updating job descriptions.
Updating.
For director and assistant director, revising the employment agreement, and finding the requirements of the town to have all this in place.
That's nice, Bonnie.
I was even happy to answer.
I bet, I bet. Should we dissolve the search committee, or should we speak, the search committee for a?
We may need it for an assistant director.
Or a, um.
But I will let the rest of the search.
Oh, good, they'll be very happy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would need it for the circulation.
No, no, you're right.
No, because the director hires.
Yeah, there you go. You hire the assistant director too.
Oh, okay.
And you're beginning to feel like the director already.
I feel, yeah, like I'm handling all things.
Good.
Wow.
Yes, congratulations in advance.
Yes, thank you. Well, we know with you here, we're not gonna do this again.
On both sides.
Yeah, you're stuck with me, so keep that in mind.
Okay.
Okay, next, order of business, the parking lot.
Bonnie's job now?
All in favor? It was a disaster, um, we're lucky somebody didn't get hurt or run over.
It was pretty bad.
And if we would've had any elderly patients walking out there, that might've happened, it was that congested.
Um, but the police responded the next day and, and has it stayed?
I only was here the day after, I didn't come back.
It was the last week of school, so it's not how it normally is right now, all the, um.
Different dismissal times and everything.
So it's a little bit gone right now, it's still not good.
Yeah, it's still a situation.
It's hard to tell whether, what kind of difference that made.
It's gonna come back in September.
Yeah.
Right.
It'll be a problem again in September, but it's.
Maybe be proactive in September and notify that we need traffic and some sort of traffic.
Well, what they did is they took the resource officer to school and put him down there.
Not a bad idea.
Not a bad idea at all.
Not a bad idea.
Not a bad idea at all.
And it's only like an hour.
End of the day.
It's, it's that time from quarter past one until pickup, that's when they start.
Yeah, they start around.
And the other day, I was taking down license plate numbers, people could care less.
You tell them, they say, so what?
I'm going into the library, parked in the back parking lot, waited for the child to come out of school, get in the truck.
Where should they park? Where is there any parking or is it just, there's no place to park?
The line goes around the school.
So just wait in line?
Yeah. They don't wanna wait in line.
That's exactly, they just don't wanna wait.
So they just tell the kids to come to, over near the library, so their, the kids are getting in the cars there.
Can, can you have a, like, one of those horse things and then the library page?
But you can't, yeah, really don't, yeah.
I think with a police officer there full time, warning's not a problem, cause everybody drives up here, but we're not on.
How about spending some money and getting an arm where your card reads it, you can come in? Come on, that's really, like the hospitals in Boston, it'd be pretty cool.
A lot of people come in with that.
How would, you have to have a library card to use it?
Yeah, so, but obviously, they could have library cards.
Right, right.
But, all right.
But I think if we set up a plan and, and appropriate in September, to have a plan and make it work.
But what about having a conversation with the superintendent, the principal of the high school now?
Yeah, yes.
Before George has out, it's hard. It'll get slightly better for a while.
It's happened to selectmen, it's happened to the police, it's, everybody's talked about it. Everybody talked about it before it happened, it's gonna be a problem, but everybody said, no, we had traffic studies, it's not gonna be a problem.
I think we should talk to Michelle Raposa, she was our advocate, knowing that there would be issues. And I think if she had seen that parking lot the other day, she would've been furious.
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
Why don't we have a committee?
Building and grounds committee.
That'd be fine.
Safety's a subset and we have two people already.
No, it makes sense that the school resource, the school takes on the task of many assets they're creating.
Yes, absolutely.
It absolutely will.
And if they use their resources, I mean, there's ten stands out there, here or there.
Rebel, I talked to deputy chief Rebel and he had it done the next day.
Yeah.
So I would ask.
Yeah, but he's not the school, right, so the school should really be getting it.
Yeah, but he told, he told the school resource officer to do it, so I don't know who's.
Are they the police, the police employing the resource officer?
Yes, he's a regular officer, with a gun, with a gun and everything, so. I don't think there's a gun in school, I shouldn't say that.
So who's on your safety committee? You and Sue?
Yeah. Do we need another? I'll volunteer.
Yeah.
Okay. Which is our new business?
It is.
I wanna set up some standing committees, instead of doing it all ad hoc. It's in our bylaws that we can have committees to focus on certain things like personnel, finance, buildings and grounds, which would include safety.
Yes, yeah, I agree with that.
And I think the finance could include grant writing or, um, just advocacy for funding. Because one of my goals with hopefully having Bonnie as director or, yeah, having Bonnie as director is increasing the educational expense reimbursement by the town. Cause I think it's five hundred now.
Not me.
Five hundred dollars toward?
Toward tuition.
Okay.
That is not very much.
No, I, I think that was the last number that George gave out, but I could be wrong. And perhaps the friends of the library might also wanna contribute, I don't know, but I just know that we have some issues possibly hiring someone to design the website and maintain it, that would need steady funding.
Is that career incentive?
Yeah. How much is that on that budget?
In twenty-four, it was thirty-nine fifty, and twenty-five is twenty-eight hundred.
Total for the whole staff.
And longevity is separate, so.
Yeah.
That's a considerable drop.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, the incentive doesn't pay, that's not paying for the college.
That's what we get.
That's what you get for having a degree.
Yeah, Amy and I are the only ones getting it right now.
Oh, so this one?
Cause Dan hasn't been here long enough.
So that's not bad.
So tuition and training, five hundred, it says five hundred, five hundred?
Yeah.
Oh, I missed, I missed.
That's what I get towards one of my classes.
Yeah, it's not enough.
Does anybody else get that too?
No, I'm the only one who's working now, so, it was three fifty and then with the last contract.
Is it specific to?
That's based on the union contract?
Yeah, that's a union contract thing, so I don't think that can change, we did get it slightly higher.
So you said we could ask FOWL if they were interested in contributing, but is there also a way to get more money from the town?
Well, if it's based on the union contract, we don't have control of it, no.
Can, can the town have a line item too? A duplicate item that the, that the, um, union has? Like, why couldn't you get it from the union and the town, and then they'd have double?
Because the union contract is it, the way it is.
No, no, like, leave that alone, but then we could ask from the other side.
But it's not from the union, it's just that the contract controls it, is.
And the, and the town pays it, I think.
And the town pays it.
If not, you mean do, that covers it.
So it's up to the union to advocate. And isn't Dan a shop steward?
Yes, yes.
He might put it on his to-do list.
Unless he takes the assistant, oh, no, the assistant director would still be in the unit.
I was just gonna ask that question.
I'll grab it one time. Yeah, no, I'm still in the unit, so.
But anyway, that's just some of my ideas, so we have a building and ground slash safety committee now. I suggest a personnel committee, which I'd like to be on, but we could use.
Power as well?
Polly.
Or fund, fundraising, well.
And then.
And what would the purpose of the personnel committee be?
Personnel issues, employment agreements, job descriptions.
There's a lot of things, there's not a lot of, which you can do. I agree with the personnel thing, but job descriptions are always.
To update, yeah, review them every year.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's been done.
No.
No. And any other personnel issues that might arise. I know we have a beautifully functioning staff, but there may be conflicts sometimes. So Polly and I could be on that, and anyone else have any ideas for committees or issues that need a standing committee?
I think we just might develop some as we go along and see what we get into.
Yeah. Now, I know it's. I suggested or appointed, so people are appointed, do we need to vote, Polly, on something like this, on committees?
It might be a better idea to write it down for the next meeting, have it established for the next meeting.
Virginia, earlier.
How many people would just put on a committee? Would it, usually it's three.
Any more than that, you have to.
But three, but three.
Hygiene, yeah.
Is a good number.
Yeah.
We had, um, there was a time, people wanted to be a committee of one, but there's no collaboration with a committee of one.
I work for myself.
Called an autocrat.
And, um, you can't have one person making decisions.
Then would you be the third on the personnel committee? We'll start with two standing committees.
Okay.
Thank you. And then we could add as needed.
So Polly, Polly and Sue, Sue.
Yeah.
We didn't split.
I think that Bonnie should be on the building and grounds committee just cause she's more into everything. Day-to-day stuff, she's.
With that, then be.
That makes four, that was like.
You're not a trustee.
Oh, okay.
You, you would.
Yeah.
So it would be on the building and grounds, would be Laura, Don?
No.
Not Laura.
Me, Sue, Sue.
Okay, right. Don, Sue, Sue and Bonnie.
And Bonnie.
When she, yeah. And personnel would be Polly, Polly, Laura. Well, do you wanna make a motion then, that these two committees be established?
But you can't, because you're the.
You can't make the motion, you're the chair.
I make the motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any oppose?
Yes, that's nice.
Um, the, the, I wanna make sure before we end that, that you give us an update on how we're looking, um, um, how we're doing with spending the money, because I, I think we all should be involved with getting ideas and trying to make sure we. That's by June 30th?
Yes.
So that's before the next meeting, so, yeah.
Yeah, I can, um, put together what I've, we've come up with so far and how much that comes to and email it to everybody.
Okay.
And we can all be thinking about other things to do if we need to.
Yeah.
But it's hard.
I know, I'm trying. Having problems trying to spend money.
Wanna get in your rug?
Old business, library budget.
No?
I think we should apply to Baitos Bank for the carpeting.
Um, that's a tricky one.
What?
I'll find out, but I had asked for something before. But I can, um.
Okay, they meet twice a year.
Yep, but, um.
Let me know.
But don't we need to pay for ourselves to spend money?
Carpeting's gonna be thirty, forty thousand dollars.
What carpeting, are you talking about the whole library?
Yeah.
Does the whole library need it?
It's a rack, yeah.
Wow, it didn't hold up well.
Yeah. There's a lot of stains on it and one sock, so.
And of course, that was the carpeting that was green in that it didn't have the chemicals in it, et cetera, but didn't hold up? Because no, wow.
Are we ready for old business? Library budget examination and comparison, that's my thing that I'd like to work on, either myself or with other people. Just start building out a budget for FY 2026 and so on and compare it to other libraries. The way I put together a comparison of director salaries, so we had actual data. So this would be actual data to the town in terms of how other libraries fund. Because every library seems to have a different mix of things, but for the most part, they fully fund the materials budget, whereas we depend on the, the various gifts that we get, which are great, and the, and the FOWL donations. But I think eventually those should be used as supplements and not the backbone of the budget. And I'm sure there's other things to find out as we dig into the budget. But that's just something I'm gonna work on probably after the summer. If anyone has any ideas, you know where to find me.
Yeah, the red car in the parking lot. Means she's here.
Okay, and maintenance checklist? That's building and grounds. Here we go.
I lost my paper.
Ten B.
I am working on it, I'm trying to break it down.
Yeah.
I do have a copy, I have the same copy that she had. Under that same category would be the ADA walkway and stuff. I resubmitted it, answered the questions that they had asked. And I also told them that we're gonna have to probably get another quote for the, part of the ADA walkway since Mike's not around to do it. So I just mentioned that to them, but I think we should be able to find something.
Is them the managing group?
Yes, sorry.
And is Mike, yeah?
Mike, Mike.
Please.
No, he was, he was gonna do that?
No, I know that he was working with Potter, so I don't know if Potter would do that, or, he was, Potter didn't have enough people to get the work done, so they were working together, I don't know.
I'll, I'll talk to Scott, cause maybe Scott worked with other contractors besides just Mike, this is his design and everything.
Good idea.
But I, I did resubmit it and, um, I haven't heard back from him, I think I submitted it last night or never. And I have another quote, another company coming to give a quote on the door, so we have a second quote.
That'll be great.
I think we can get it done for less, but, you know, like, that's the top of the line, if we have to go that route.
And that is in that grant request?
Thirty, thirty-two thousand, yeah.
And is that also a light for the back door?
That was, was a camera in that door.
Was included, yeah.
What's that?
There is lighting that, yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought it had to be improved, no?
It was just a camera, adding a camera.